...of the Foxborough Board of Appeals. This meeting and the hearings that will be considered is being broadcast and recorded by Foxborough Cable Access. Time being 6:30 PM, we have the continued public hearing of John Theron Hilton and Beverly Christensen Hilton, seeking a special permit pursuant to the code of the town of Foxborough, Massachusetts, Chapter 275 zoning, Section 5.4.2, to allow the alteration to a pre-existing nonconforming lot and any other special permits, variances, or findings as may be required with respect to the foregoing. Property is located at 310 Coccassett Street in the R40 Residential and Agricultural District and is not located in any restrictive overlay district. So, as you remember, after our meeting last month, we decided to continue the matter to give both Frank and I an opportunity to do some research on the matter. Frank actually called me the next morning to tell me he had done some research on it. And what I had asked was that he put the information in writing and that I would then look at it and speak with him and speak with Mr. Shippey. And two weeks ago, we met Frank, Scott, and I, and discussed the matter. As I indicated, Frank, he didn't convince me. I still felt that he was not entitled, not authorized, to have a special permit. There had to be some kind of physical change to the dwelling itself. Obviously Frank disagreed, but I have the vote, so unless somebody agrees with Frank, what we decided we could do, and I think Frank is amenable to this, is we can still grant a finding that would be consistent to what is in Section 5.4.2. Again, it will not be doing a special permit, and I don't want to deny the request for a special permit. But I think we can issue a finding that would be, again, consistent with the wording in Section 5.4.2. And I think you feel that would be consistent with what you need.
Yes. So, the application, we put in language that we requested any other finding, variance, or anything like that. So at this time, we'd like to, you know, just ask that the board consider a finding and not a special permit with regard to our request.
So, the finding that I would like us to consider is that the board finds that the nonconforming nature of the Hilton dwelling subsequent to the proposed land conveyances will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood in which such structure is located than is the nonconforming nature of the Hilton dwelling at the current time. Questions, comments, thoughts?
Can we read that one more time?
Yep. The board finds that the nonconforming nature of the Hilton dwelling subsequent to the proposed land conveyances, and again, those conveyances were the swap of properties, will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood in which such structure is located than is the nonconforming nature of the Hilton dwelling at the current time.
That makes sense to me.
Yeah, that makes sense to me.
Okay. Eric?
No, that's phones.
Scott?
I agree.
You okay with it? Kurt, are you there?
I agree.
He's supposed to be zooming in.
Said Kurt is talking on it.
You might be on mute.
I guess I'm here if you can hear me, Barney.
Barely. Do you have any questions, Kurt?
No, I don't.
Okay. So, you want to make a motion?
So, moved.
Second.
Okay. I'm gonna have to do this by roll call because we have one person, even though he's not voting. So, Kim?
Yes.
Lorraine?
Yes.
And Barney? Yes. Okay. All done.
All right. Thank you.
But, big question. Beverly, you've lived in town a long time. Do you remember the old Bradleys?
Yeah.
Do you remember who was there before them?
Was it a Kmart?
That's what I thought it was, K. Was it Kmart?
I don't remember. I think it was a Kmart.
Might be. That's the big question that we're...
Oh.
Well, we'll go with Kmart. Frank, ask your mother, though.
I will. Ask Mr. Buckley, too.
Yeah.
I'll see him tomorrow.
Mammoth Mart?
Mammoth Mart. Oh, we got another one. That's right, Bill's been in town for a long time.
Yeah.
All right, we got two possibilities.
Yeah, I'll ask my mother, because there's a good chance she still has a receipt. One of them was there. I don't doubt that at all. So, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, if I could just take a look at the decision before it's approved by everyone, just, I just want to be comfortable with it.
I'll send it over to you next week.
Not a problem.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Happy holidays, happy New Year. We can't start the next application until 6:40, so if you would just relax, why don't we approve the minutes now from the November 20 meeting? Anybody have any questions concerning them?
No.
No. They look good.
Again, let me do it by roll call. Kim?
Yes.
Motion to approve, rather. Second it?
Second.
Kim?
Yes.
Lorraine?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
And Eric?
Yes.
And Barney? Yes. So approved. Okay.
There's Kurt.
It's been found.
It's found. Actually, it already has to work. So, I'm still a big grandpa. Bring him with Harlow's. Watch her in the morning. Open her up. Because he doesn't want to stay.
Who's this one?
In, like lunch.
This one is...
He's like an introvert.
Yeah, home occupation.
He's an introvert. He doesn't like people. So, I'm gonna bring him home, just so he's not home by himself.
I have it.
And I'll head back, have dinner with them, and then Larry's gonna meet up with them in the afternoon. She should get down and work. We're gonna go to Alina's, which is in the family compound.
I predate them for that thing. Well, it was online.
Which is gonna have dessert. Like, secret standard over there. Or swamp. Sunday night, we're having our family over. Her family over.
That's different than the one I had in front of me.
I'll be cooking all day. She works.
This isn't on the agenda for today.
Yeah.
This one's the Turner Road one. The next one is this one I'm aware of. That's the number two on the agenda. That's the home occupation. I just had this in front of me. I didn't have this for today.
Nope.
This is a Frank's lane, so this is not on for today since he left. It was just sitting. Yeah.
Sorry, I thought you were asking about this one?
Nope.
Sorry?
I did look at this earlier today.
Okay, sorry.
That's three, two, two.
It's this one?
Sorry.
It's next one?
Yeah. Do you happen to have an extra copy of the application?
Yeah. This one?
Yes. This one? Yes. Second, 6:35.
Hi. Question. You don't have to have an extra application. Next one.
Barney has all the folders. Do you have a... He doesn't have the home occupation. Do you have an extra one?
Thank you.
Another minute. Yeah?
Barney, do you have an application for Bailey, because Scott couldn't find his?
Yeah, I'll give it to you later.
Which one?
Okay, the time being 6:40 PM, and I'm gonna apologize in advance, because I'm probably gonna mispronounce your name, but Gita Jakaraju?
Yeah, you got it right.
Oh. Request a special permit pursuant to the code of the town of Foxborough, Chapter 275 zoning, Section 3.1.6, Table 3-1, Table of uses, Use L10, and Section 322, to allow an intensive home occupation for art education at 5 Goodwin Drive, Foxborough. Property is located in the R40 Residential and Agricultural zoning district and is not located in any restrictive overlay districts. There are four of us here, and there is a gentleman who is zooming in who's also on the board.
Good evening.
All of us participate, but only Lorraine, Kim, and I will be voting. In order to approve the application, our vote has to be unanimous.
Sure.
And although all of us have received the complete application, and we have your write-up, unless members of the public have gone online to look at it, they're not aware of what you're doing. So if you can just lead us through what you've put in writing and summarize that, we'll probably have some questions.
Absolutely. So, I reside at 5 Goodwin Drive, Foxborough, and we moved about three years back. So, I've been working in corporate industry about 15-plus years, and I'm also passionate about art. I used to kind of teach kids, and kids specifically at my home as a, like a hobby, right? So, but in the recent years, and now looking at my career, as I move forward, I have decided to pursue art as my full-time profession. So, in order to do that, I want to open a small home business officially, occupation to, for my career, which primarily focuses on, you know, taking workshops and classes to the, you know, for the age groups of 12 and above, and in the community. And I'm planning to take two to three sessions per week, mostly over the weekends, Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays. It's primarily focusing on more stress, you know, unwinding and therapeutic sessions for adults, especially women, and also for Indian adults, right? And also for the kids, like art camps and so forth for kids. And my primary intention and goal is to kind of bring the awareness of art and the benefit it provides to the well-being and for the kids and children, and also for the adults, through art classes in drawing, painting, and folk art. Yeah.
What is folk art?
Folk art is the art that is more related, culturally related to specific tribe or area, and something like mandala art. And there are different forms, you know, especially from India, if we talk about, we have Varli, Madhubani, there's multiple types of, and one of the example, if it's well-known, is the mandala art that you have.
So, what you'll be doing is primary painting?
Painting and drawing, and especially is to deal with acrylic paints and markers and, you know, pencils, color pencils.
But nothing in the way of like ceramics, where you might have a kiln or anything of that nature?
No, no kiln or not with the ceramics.
Okay.
It's mostly the paper and drawing with pencils and acrylic paints.
I'm sorry, what were the age, the age range you had?
I didn't hear.
So, I'm 12-plus.
12-plus?
Yes.
Okay. And you're the only instructor?
I'm the only instructor.
Okay. So, you're not intending any employees at this point in time?
Not any employees, like, not any employees, but if anyone want to volunteer and being an instructor, I would welcome those, any surrounding artists around. Yeah.
How many children per session do you expect?
I expect about eight to 12, so I want to actually keep it minimum, considering the space, and also to be, to have a manageable class. So, my targeted audience is max 12, and eight to 12 is the range I'm looking for. Yeah.
And what kind of space would this be?
This would be in my basement, which is fully completed. It's a 1,200-plus square foot basement. It's open and very much ventilated with big windows. And I also have a full bathroom for, you know, participants coming in, so.
So, on this material which you provided, it'll be in the area that's called the media playroom?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Do you anticipate using the entire area?
Entire area. It's open. Yeah.
Okay. Parking for individuals. I know you said you have, and I know from driving by, you have a long driveway.
Yes, I do.
Do you anticipate that there will be any need to have vehicles parked on the street?
Maybe one or two, but we do have ample space, looking at our area. It's about 1.3 square foot, like, you know, on the left side and the right side, not blocking the driveway of my neighbor who is opposite to me. So, I think, I anticipate one or two might be parking in front of the house outside the driveway, but full instructions will be provided to, while registration, that they should not be blocking the area of the opposite my neighbor.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I don't find it as a problem, because we do have ample space there.
So, what is the largest number of cars that you would anticipate having parked at your house?
So, I think, looking at the attendants, right, if someone is coming on their own car, you know, again, eight to 10 cars, maybe 12. And so, taking, my driveway can accommodate up to eight cars, right? So, I have like long driveway and also a small space which accommodates two cars and two other cars in front of the street. Yeah.
So, you would expect everyone to stay as opposed to drop-offs?
On some, there will be drop-offs, right? When, with the kids, there will be drop-offs. So, I, like, you know, I'm not anticipating more than, like, 10 cars at a time, for sure. So, in addition to drop-offs, or if someone, if it is adults staying back, right? And carpooling is one of the things that is actually, you know, more encouraged for the adults, right? So, yeah. I'm not anticipating more than 10 cars at a time, at the max.
And classes are by pre-arrangement?
Oh, does that...
Your classes are by arrangement?
Yes.
Not, you're not accepting any walk-ins?
Not walk-ins.
Okay.
It's through registration. I do have a website. Registration is not open yet, because I'm waiting for this to happen. So, yeah, through registration. Yeah.
And, you know, for example, you've indicated that in your write-up, that you would have classes Friday from 5:00 to 7:30, Saturday between 3:00 and 7:00, Sunday 3:30 to 5:00. Just one class during that time?
That is one. So, usually the classes are 90 minutes or two hours. So, that's, that's the timeframe. Yeah.
So, you won't have back-to-back classes, in other words?
Maybe on Saturday, like, that's why I put in like 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM.
Mm-hmm.
So, Saturday is a wide, like, you know, people are, it's a holiday and open.
Right.
So, I anticipate maybe two classes on Saturday, given, yeah.
Okay. You plan on using any signage for the business?
In front of the house?
Yes.
Not planned at this time.
Okay.
Yeah. Because I'm planning on marketing through my website and Instagram. So, I do have an Instagram account and also Facebook account, and of course, WhatsApp is another means of communication with the known contacts.
Okay.
You had said something before about camp. Did you anticipate you yourself having a summer camp or a vacation?
It's not the summer camp. So, when I meant to say camp, it's like, it's basically that Saturday, right, a full, like, three to seven, four hours extended period of time where they're doing, working on one project, right? Like that, like, you know, one project, a themed project like that. So, it's not like a summer camp where it is like five days a week or something like that. It's more, maybe it's, camp is not the right word to say, but what I meant to is that some having, you know, in the holidays, right? So, for the kids to come and stay like a longer, more than two hours, two to three hours, and to work on one project. Yeah.
So, a more complicated project?
A more complicated, yeah.
Okay. Okay. And so, the classes, you're anticipating only in your basement, not in any place else in your house?
Only in basement, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, at this point, yeah, only in basement.
I apologize if you've included this, but is there a separate entrance in the, for the basement?
There is a separate entrance. It's a bulkhead, actually. So, I plan to have people come from my front door.
Okay.
Yeah, in the beginning, and in the future, I do have a plan to have a doghouse more convenient in the future.
I'm sorry, of what?
So, the basement entrance, right? I want to make it more convenient in the future. If it's needed, we'll plan for more, like, a doghouse, something like that, structure. But now, I'm, I'm going to have, I know, the participants come through my front door, front entrance. Yeah.
All right. So, just a question about parking. You mentioned you have room for eight cars in the driveway plus two, so you would be able to have 10 on your property?
Yes. Yeah.
And do you anticipate, you know, I'm assuming that you'd have a car for potentially each adult who would come, so are any of these times specific to adults, like?
Yeah, so Fridays are specific to adults and Sundays. So, Saturdays is for kids, like 12, 12-plus, right? So, adults are like an 18-plus and so forth. So, Fridays specifically, Fridays and Sundays are specifically for adults.
And Saturdays could be both children?
Both children, like a family, family art gathering or something like that. Yeah.
So, in theory, on a Friday or a Sunday, there could be 12 vehicles, if you have 12?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
And you think you can park 10 on your driveway?
Yeah, my husband. So, it's not a...
We can, we can. Yeah, we can extend the driveway. We can park.
Okay.
You indicate that you're a certified instructor in fine arts. Does this business require any other type of licensing?
No, not necessarily. No.
So, no alterations to this structure at this time?
For the area, I'm, I'm going to take, no, no.
Okay.
No alterations. So, it's recently done. The basement is recently done, with an idea of that I'm going to take the classes, so I kept it all open and more specific to taking the classes. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Kurt, do you have any questions?
Well, the only questions that I have, and I would, of course, defer to the building commissioner on this, is to make sure that the space that is being used is safe and compliant with every other, you know, concern that town may have for having children in the space.
Yeah, it's a recently built house. It's built in 2019, so smoke detectors are there, and I can verify that building permits were pulled when the basement was finished. I think I was there to do the final on it, so it's adequate enough. I mean, it's a pretty spacious house. I mean, it's over 3,000 square feet. So, plenty of room.
And the bulkhead is sufficient for egress?
Bulkhead, I mean, it is, it can be used as a second means of egress, and the primary means would be through the...
Upstairs.
Through the upstairs. Yep.
So, the bulkhead could be used for emergency?
Yeah.
If necessary?
Yeah.
And I do believe you have very large windows they can crawl out to.
Very large windows, yes. So...
If I can remember the house, so.
Yeah.
It's wide open space, too.
It is, it is wide open space. Yeah.
Kurt, anything else?
That's my only question. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna open this for any public questions or comments. You would have to go to the podium, tell us who you are, name and address.
Hi, my name is Tom Oleksik, 52 Spring Street.
Could you spell your last name for me?
O-L-E-K-S-Y-K.
O-L-E-K-S-Y-K?
Correct.
And, I'm sorry, 52 Spring Street?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay. I'm glad to hear that there's some, you know, architect construction being requested, and I think it's a great idea. My only concerns are, is kind of like what Kurt was alluding to, and that is because this is gonna be a program that's gonna be dealing primarily with minor children. Is this type of operation, or is it, or would it be subject to any other regulations such as daycare programs, specifically with regard to health and safety issues? Whether a quarry would be required, in this case, for the primary instructor or any other instructors that might be added to the program over time? I'm just concerned about that, that this is, if there are, if there are state or town regulations that are required for this sort of class, our instruction, I hear a lot of questions being raised about the facility, the parking lot, or the parking, the driveway, the parking involved. Those are, those are one area of concerns, but the other concern that I have would be having to do with having groups of children in, in the program, and how it's supervised, how it's run, and whether or not it's compliant with established regulations for health and safety of children. Other concern that I had is that it's a long, narrow, from what I hear, because I don't, I don't know your property, a long, narrow driveway. In the winter, if that's been plowed, you've got berms on either side, is that going to impact on, I imagine that this will be running year-round?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, it's anticipated. So, you know, the conditions of parking in the summer might be vastly different from what it might be in the, you know, in the different season, and I'm also concerned how that might impact fire, equipment access, and things like that. So, those are just some of the thoughts that I had. I'm glad to hear that you're proposing to do it and you want to, and I, but those are just some concerns that I would have. I know that in, you know, daycare programs, nursery schools, they're subject to very clearly defined rules and regulations about security, safety, and health, and I'm just thinking, if you have, anytime you have groups of children, you know, in a, you know, in a program like that, that it's, it meets those minimum requirements, at the very least. Those are my only questions that I have.
Okay, thank you. I'm not sure how to answer your question, because I don't know if, and maybe, you know, whether there's any licensing or, from a state standpoint or what have you. What we're responsible for is whether this satisfies zoning requirements.
Yeah.
So, we, we cannot ourselves make a decision as to whether, you know, she needs a license or has to have a license, or, you know, what those licensure requirements are, but, but it's a good question. But perhaps you can answer that?
Yeah, so, I think what I understood, and it's like, in terms of the daycare, right? So, you are basically taking care of the children full day, like, in a half-day, it's more focused on, like, they are there for a longer time than you expected. This is more like, you know, what I anticipate, this is as having someone coming over for, like, you know, one hour or 90 minutes as going to any tuition, right? So, this is like, you know, learning an art. So, I have not explored on any, like, if I need a license in this scenario, but given the, I know, knowing other people taking the classes at home, in this capacity, I'm not aware or heard about taking a license, and I don't anticipate that I would need a license, because it's not similar to the daycare services where, you know, it's more focused on taking care of the children, on, you know, feeding, right? Giving food, and they're, they're there with you all day, but this is more like having them come over and learn a skill and stay for an hour or 90 minutes and go. And the parents are always aware of what they're, you know, they're dropping off or they're picking up, and they're... front entrance, yeah.
All right.
So just a question about parking. You mentioned you have room for eight cars in the driveway plus two, so you would be able to have 10 on your property?
Yes, yeah.
And do you anticipate, you know, I'm assuming that you'd have a car for potentially each adult who would come, so are any of these times specific to adults, like?
Um, yeah, so Fridays are specific to adults. And Sundays, so Saturdays is for kids, like 12, 12 plus, right? So adults are like an 18 plus and so forth. So Fridays specifically, Fridays and Sundays are specifically for adults.
And Saturdays could be both children?
Both children, like a family, family art gathering or something like that, yeah.
So in theory, on a Friday or a Sunday, there could be 12 vehicles if you have 12?
Yeah.
Okay. And you think you can park 10?
On your?
On, on your driveway?
Yeah, my husband, so it's not a concern.
We can, we can. Yeah, we can extend the driveway. They can park.
Okay.
You indicate that you're a certified instructor in fine arts. Does this business require any other type of licensing?
No, not necessarily, no.
So no alterations to this structure at this time?
For the area, I'm, I'm going to take, no, no, no alterations. So it's recently done. The basement is recently done with an idea of that I'm going to take the classes, so I kept it all open and more specific to taking the classes, yeah.
Thank you.
Kurt, do you have any questions?
Well, the only questions that I have, and I would of course defer to the building commissioner on this, is to make sure that the space that is being used is safe and compliant with every other, you know, concern that town may have for having children in the space.
Yeah, it's a recently built house. It's built in 2019, so smoke detectors are there and I can verify that building permits were pulled when the basement was finished. I think I was there to do the final on it, so it's adequate enough. I mean, it's a pretty spacious house. I mean, it's over 3,000 square feet. So plenty of room.
And the bulkhead is sufficient for?
Okay, I mean, it is, it can be used as a second means of egress and the primary means would be through the?
Upstairs.
Through the upstairs, yep.
So the bulkhead could be used for emergency?
Yeah.
If necessary?
Yeah.
And I do believe you have very large windows they can crawl out to?
Large windows, yes, so.
If I can remember the house, so. It's wide open space, too.
It is, it is wide open space, yeah.
Kurt, anything else?
That's my only question. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna open this for any public questions or comments. You would have to go to the podium, tell us who you are, name and address.
Hi, my name is Tom Oleksik, 52 Spring Street.
Could you spell your last name for me? O-L-E-K-S-Y-K?
Correct.
And I'm sorry, 52 Spring Street?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Go ahead.
I'm glad to hear that there's some, you know, architect construction being requested and I think it's a great idea. My only concerns are, is kind of like what Kurt was alluding to, and that is because this is going to be a program that's going to be dealing primarily with minor children. Is this type of operation, or is it, or would it be subject to any other regulations such as daycare programs specifically with regard to health and safety issues? Whether a quarry would be required in this case for the primary instructor or any other instructors that might be added to the program over time? I'm, I'm just concerned about that, that, that this is, if there are, if there are state or town regulations that are required for this sort of class, our instruction. I hear a lot of questions being raised about the facility, the parking lot, or the parking, the driveway, the parking involved. Those are, those are one area of concerns, but the other concern that I have would be having to do with having groups of children in, in the program and how it's supervised, how it's run, and whether or not it's compliant with established regulations for health and safety of, of children. Other concern that I had is that it's a long, narrow, from what I hear, because I don't, I don't know your property, a long, narrow driveway. In the winter, if that's been plowed, you've got berms on either side, is that going to impact on, I imagine that this will be running year round?
Okay, it's anticipated. So, you know, the conditions of parking in the summer might
be vastly different from what it might be in the, you know, in the different season. And I'm also concerned how that might impact fire, equipment access and things like that. So those are just some of the thoughts that I had. I'm glad to hear that you're proposing to do it and you want to and I, but those are just some concerns that I would have. I know that in, you know, daycare programs, nursery schools, they're subject to very clearly defined rules and regulations about security, safety and, and health. And I'm just thinking, if you have, anytime you have groups of children, you know, in a, you know, in a program like that, that it's, it meets those minimum requirements at the very least. Those are my only questions that I have.
Okay, thank you. I'm, I'm not sure how to answer your question. Because I don't know if, and maybe you, you know whether there's any licensing or, from a state standpoint or what have you. What we're responsible for is whether this satisfies zoning requirements.
Yeah, I know.
So we, we cannot ourselves make a decision as to whether, you know, she needs a license or, or has to have a license or, you know, what those licensure requirements are, but, but it's a good question. But perhaps you can answer that?
Yeah, so I think what I understood, and it's like in terms of the daycare, right? So you are basically taking care of the children full day, like in a half day, it's more focused on, like they are there for a longer time than you expected. This is more like, you know, what I anticipate this is as having someone coming over for like, you know, one hour or 90 minutes as going to any tuition, right? So this is like, you know, learning an art. So I have not explored on any, like if I need a license in this scenario, but given the, I know, knowing other people taking the classes at home in this capacity, I'm not aware or heard about taking a license and I don't anticipate that I would need a license because it's not similar to the daycare services where, you know, it's more focused on taking care of the children, on, you know, feeding, right, giving food and they're, they're there with you all day. But this is more like having them come over and learn a skill and stay for an hour or 90 minutes and go. And the parents are always aware of what they're, you know, they're dropping off or they're picking up and they're being instructed of what is being provided and so forth, yeah.
And because things like daycare programs are licensed by the state, so there's a different, you know, scenario there for different reasons. Are you aware of anything of that nature? I mean, I liken this to the kind, even though there would be more people here, I liken this to the kind of thing that my daughter did years ago when she was taking violin lessons
Yeah.
at someone's home. Even though that was one-to-one, it was still the same kinds of issues, I think, that you're talking about, so, okay. Anybody else? Any final questions that we have? So, when we have a motion?
Just a quick question about any neighbors' input on this, if any, that you're aware?
So my neighbor, 6 Goodwin Drive, Swati, she did call me earlier about a small question about the, just making sure the parking, the people are not parking in front of her driveway. And other than that, I did explain to her that I'll be providing instructions to the participants to make sure, like, to make sure that they're not parking in front of the driveway and they're parking away from her driveway on the street or in my driveway. So, and then she's absolutely fine with that. So I did have that conversation and yeah, so that was the only question she had. And I have not heard from any other neighbors and they're definitely excited about this, yeah.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
There is, there was a permit pulled, it was completed and it was closed out for a 1,450 square foot basement.
I'm sorry?
1,450 square feet they have down in the basement and it was a permit pulled for it. So all the permits were approved and approved, I mean, and finalized.
Yeah, I calculated the total area of the basement as being 1,945 with the finished area being 1,458.
Yeah.
And if you add that together with the upstairs, the area that's going to be used for the occupation is less than the 40% that's required.
Yeah.
Unless we have any other questions, a motion to close the public portion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Kim?
Yes.
Lorraine?
Yes.
And me, yes. Kim, why don't you start because I want to finish writing something here?
Sure, hang on. Okay, so in looking at the bylaws under home occupation intensive, so it is permitted by, occupation is permitted by special permit subject to the following standards. The business must not produce noise or other objectional characteristics beyond the limits of the lot and as described to us by the applicant, we're talking about pencils, paints, paper. So I don't know that, that would be a consideration for us. The area devoted to the home occupation shall not exceed 40% of the habitable floor area of the principal residence. It is less than the 40%. Necessary off-street parking shall be provided. I think this is something that would be worth a note for us to have, you know, to discuss. No more than two persons in addition to family members residing in the residence may be employed within the principal residence or in an accessory building. And as the applicant stated, it will just be herself.
Yes.
Storage of materials or products outside of the principal residence is prohibited. And the making of external structural alterations to the principal residence or an accessory building is prohibited and the applicant has said that there will be no alterations. So in looking at this, I certainly would like to talk about number three, that the necessary off-street parking shall be provided.
Okay, Lorraine?
No, I, I agree that all of the conditions look good on here. That was my concern was the off-street parking and how to be able to manage that. You know, the class size versus the limitation of 10 on site.
Mm-hmm. Eric?
I don't have anything to add.
Kurt, any comments?
Well, the, you know, notwithstanding any of, you know, whatever permits may be necessary to run this business, which is, you know, not what we're here for tonight. The other concern that I have is, is that if it is a long driveway and there are, you know, 10 cars with another couple of cars on the street as overflow, does that create a safety issue for ambulance, fire, EMS, whatever? I mean, is, I, I don't know the answer to that, but it would seem to me that if there are that many cars in that small of an area, it could be problematic to get, you know, kind of first responders in.
I, I think we can deal with the issue of on-street parking by a condition that would limit, you know, the number of vehicles. And by the same token, we can specify the maximum number of vehicles that would be permitted on the, in the driveway. But if there were six vehicles or 10 vehicles in the driveway, I think Kurt has a good point, if an ambulance has to come there, they're obviously not going to be able to move, go straight to the house because of cars parking there. My recollection, you don't have a fence around the property, so they can always go up the front lawn if it's not snow covered.
I would like to add one more thing. So on, on our left side of our driveway, there's an ample space, like, so the number one house between the house, the space between the house, number one, one house, then there's a post of boxes, then my house. The driveway, so it's ample space. So not in just front of my, like, you know, house property, there's ample space where cars can be parked. You know, considering if we, if we, if we limit to park six cars on my driveway, there's ample space to have four cars park on my left side of the driveway in front of my house. And also, there's a bridge in between the first house, so.
So still on your property?
Yes, yeah.
Do you have a garage?
Yes, we do.
And you would keep your cars?
Yeah, my cars, two gar, we, we only have one car, so two garages.
So she, the applicant is telling us that the, the largest number of cars that she might anticipate is 10. And if eight can fit in the driveway, then how do we?
I, I think it was said that they could park 10, eight in the driveway, two on the side.
Okay.
So that's why I was looking, you know, that versus the 12 in the class. We've got two cars, there aren't really spaces for.
Okay. So 10 in the driveway, if there's 12 adults in the class and they each drive their own car, this sounds like a word problem. Then, then we are looking at possibly two on the street.
I mean, one of the proposed conditions I had drafted was a maximum of, initially I had eight, I guess we could say 10, of 10 vehicles parked at, on the residence and a maximum of two on the street.
So you're saying eight on the property and two on the street? Is that what you're saying?
10 on the property.
10 on the property.
10 on the property, okay.
And two on the street, maximum.
Okay, so a total of 12.
In that scenario, would that require the vehicles that pull in first to be blocked in? Meaning the only way they could get out was in the order they came in?
Yeah.
Yeah. But again, theoretically, everybody would be leaving at the same time.
Yeah.
If somebody had to leave early for some reason, they're going to have to move cars.
Yeah.
And then something sort of adjacent to this that we should talk about is that she had mentioned possibly having two adult classes on Saturday. So then we would need to potentially discuss?
There would be an interval between classes.
Yes, so that there's really no overlap of the cars.
Yeah.
So enough time for people to finish, pack up, leave, and then for the next ones to come in.
Yep. There is always a time gap, so like, you know, 3 to 7, right? So there will be like a half an hour or 15 minutes gap in between all of the time, so, yeah.
Okay, and that allows you to reset as well?
Yes, yeah.
On the inside, in the basement, okay.
So why did I do this? Let me just read the conditions that I proposed and then we can figure out what to do next. So first would be that the special permit that's granted by the decision is specific to Ms. Jacaraju. Neither can be assigned, conveyed or transferred to any other person, nor reexercised by any other person who may own, lease or reside in the, in the residence. And Ms. Jacaraju must reside within the residence at all times in which she's performing the proposed home occupation for, for the special permit to be in effect. Number two, the proposed home occupation should at all times comply with the intensive home occupation standards set forth in section 322 of the zoning bylaw. Three, performance of the proposed home occupation is restricted to Fridays between 5:00 PM and 7:30 PM, Saturdays between 3:00 PM and 7:00 PM, and Sundays between 3:30 PM and 5:00, 5:00 PM. If more than one class is conducted on any such day, there shall be an interval of not less than 15 minutes between such classes. Four, not more than 12 individuals may participate in the proposed home occupations classes at any single time. All classes are to be held by appointment. Walk-in participation is prohibited. Five, the proposed home occupation shall be performed in the media playroom portion of the Jacaraju residence, as the same is shown on the proposed home occupation floor plan. Six, a maximum of 10 motor vehicles for individuals participating in the proposed home occupations classes may be parked at the Jacaraju residence at any single time during the hours in which the proposed home occupation is being conducted. Maximum of two motor vehicles may be parked on the street at any single time during the hours in which the proposed home occupation is being conducted. Seven, consistent with the provisions of section 213, 5D12 of the Code of Town of Foxborough, Massachusetts, one free standing sign that identifies the proposed home occupation and that is not larger than three square feet in area, does not exceed six feet in height, and then a setback at least 10 feet from the subject property's lot line may be placed on the subject property and the illumination of such sign is prohibited. And eight, to the extent that Ms. Jacaraju is conducting business under any fictitious name, a current business certificate must be obtained from the Foxborough Town Clerk and must be maintained in force and effect during the term of this special permit. Go ahead.
I actually have that business certificate at my office right now and I have not signed off on it?
Okay.
For this purpose.
Yep.
So she has applied for, for that. I have not signed off. This was what triggered her to come before the board right now.
Okay, good.
So that, that's been satisfied. If approved.
So let me ask you a question. And this will go back to sort of Kurt's question. Let's assume there were seven or eight cars parked in the driveway. At, at what point do you have authority to say that that's a problem from a safety standpoint?
On private property, you really don't.
Okay.
Because it could be, I mean, you could have that, that, that.
Could have that with just company?
That incident happened with parties or something like that, that they just can't get to. And obviously at a party, somebody goes down, you're going to have that issue. The fire department makes do what, what they can do. They will make, they will get in there. For convenience, yeah, it'd be great to drive right up the front door, but they never, that never happens in real life.
Mm-hmm.
So, and it's on private property.
Right. So all you can do is ask?
You can only ask.
Okay.
They could only eight, eight to 10 cars and park them in their driveway. And.
It's a long driveway.
It's a long driveway.
How much time, Barney, did you have in the condition for in-between classes?
At least 15, at least 15 minutes.
Okay.
Would that be adequate enough for you to?
I think so. So usually my, the format of the classes, you know, when I say 90 minutes, it's not like going until like last one, the 90 minute, right? So it's always like the 10 minutes, okay, now wrap up and kind of leave situations. So I would think 15 minutes would be sufficient. If, if more time is needed, definitely I'll honor that, right? So I can adjust time or maybe sessions, yeah, to make sure I'm giving ample time, like maybe like, you know, 20, 30 minutes or so forth, if that's a requirement, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Lorraine, Eric, anybody, any other thoughts?
I know we've been talking about the parking, but should there be any consideration to the class size itself? I know she mentioned how many her expectation is.
Yeah, I said not more than 12.
Oh, you did say not more than 12 students?
Yep.
That's a good number for me to manage, too, because I give one-to-one attention to the students, yeah.
Can you have 30 minutes between, you know, where it looks like Saturday is really the only day?
The only day, so, yeah, I'm looking at.
30 minutes would be acceptable?
Yeah, so three, you know, if I started three, three to four 30 is 90 minutes and
That gives you two hours.
Yeah, I, I will, I will have 30 minutes. I should be able to give 30 minutes easily, yeah.
Anything else? Any other thoughts? Any other conditions? Want to make a motion or what?
Yes, so moved with the conditions as read.
Second.
Again, I gotta do it by roll call. So Kim?
Yes.
Lorraine?
Yes.
And Barney, yes. So we'll be drafting a decision. Diana, what's your schedule like the next week and a half?
I am next, I am here next Wednesday and Thursday.
Okay, I may not be able to do it between now and next Wednesday or Thursday, but certainly, you know, the week after. After it is signed, Diana files it with the town clerk and that starts a 20-day appeal period. After the appeal period runs, and I assume there's going to be no appeal, you have to file a decision with the registry of deeds and debt him.
Okay.
And then give evidence of that filing to Mr. Shippey. And I guess at that point, you'll sign off on the business certificate.
Absolutely.
Okay. So if you have any questions, just give Diana a call or give Mr. Shippey a call and best of luck to you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you, thank you, thank you all.
Okay, the time being 6:50 PM. Viewpoint Sign and Ordin, Plan of Fitness, request a special sign permit pursuant to the Code of Town of Foxborough, Massachusetts, chapter 213, signs, section 213, 3C1G, to allow for a proposed wall sign that exceeds the permitted size of 100 square feet, building on which the sign is to be installed is situated at 30 Commercial Street, Foxborough, in sign district two. And you are?
I'm Anne Ramsey from Viewpoint Sign.
Okay. Go ahead.
So we're proposing a 196 square foot sign. The building is set close to 600 feet from the, the street, I believe. Yeah. The wall sign is set 600 feet from the main street and it's just, it's really, the 100 square feet makes it really tiny to, to see it at that, at that angle and you, you pretty much have to be almost past the building to see it, which kind of makes it dangerous to try and find that location.
Do you know what the size of the actual wall is that you'll be putting the sign on? Do you know what the size of the actual wall is that you'll be putting the sign on?
I do not believe I do, believe it or not. I don't think she put that up for me.
Scott, do you have any idea what the size of the wall is?
Can I do some calculation?
Anne, let me ask you another question. Is it Anne with an E or Anne with...
It is Anne with an E, yes.
Okay. And my next question is, any of the other signs in that complex, same size, or...
Ocean State is pretty, pretty close, but I don't know exact what it is.
How about the sign that's being replaced, the one that...
There was no sign, not, there was no sign when I...
Oh, okay.
Took it over, so I'm not sure if something was there before or not. So the building, the area of the building of where we are placing our sign is 13 feet, 4 inches. Sorry, my glasses are not there.
By 55 feet. Little over 700 square feet.
And that's just the, just the side?
That's the facade.
Yeah.
There's still a little bit more, like, like Patriot Place, it has two other wall spaces on the side as well, as well.
All right, anybody else have any other questions?
So when I drove by, there is a sign there at the moment.
Yes, the letters are up.
So the letters are...
The letters are permitted.
Yep, the letters are permitted.
You want to add the gear.
Okay, so adding the, okay, so the gear or the logo, and that's going to add on...
Yeah, the gear triggered the going over that 100.
Okay, so that's going to send us from 100 to 196?
Yes.
Okay.
Planet Fitness gear is basically their...
Logo.
That's how you can tell what it is, but corporate has decided that unless you can have the, they'd rather have bigger letters than have a gear, so we put the letters up, but my client, who is a franchisee, he just doesn't feel the driving by. When you see that gear, you could have the gear with no letters, and you know what it is. So with it being so far a setback, if you catch the gear out of the corner of your eye, you're going to know where you're going.
Lorraine, any questions?
So is this drawing...
That is what it will look like when it's...
And this is to size, this is...
That's to size, yes. I don't know what the size is, I don't, I didn't get a copy of that, because I'm assuming they got it there as well, but...
No, that...
Not able to find it.
I think that was there before the sign bylaw. This current sign bylaw would affect...
That's probably why I couldn't find it.
The only one I think, and I should have checked, but I didn't have a chance, the Extreme Craze one, that's fairly big.
Yeah, that was...
I just don't remember if we...
I think that was a special permit.
You think so?
Yeah.
Okay. So that would have exceeded 100 square feet. And all of the design and the specifications are...
Yep.
As here, okay. Eric, any questions?
No, I was just curious about the Extreme Craze sign as well, but I was just going to see if I could find a photo.
Yeah, I thought about it before, I just didn't have a chance to check the decisions. Kurt, any questions? Kurt went to the refrigerator. Anybody in the public wish to be heard? Someone have a motion to close the public portion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Kim?
Yes.
Lorraine?
Yes.
And Barney, yes. No, I have no problems, you know, with this, and I have just two, two conditions, which would be, one, that the sign be restricted in area to 196.1 square feet, and second, that the design dimensions, construction, location, and specification of the sign shall be a set forth in this documentation, that we'll attach that as an exhibit. Anything else?
Nope, I agree.
No, sounds good.
Okay, motion?
So moved with the two conditions as read.
Second.
Okay. Kim?
Yes.
Lorraine?
Yes.
And Barney, yes. Okay, so we'll draft and sign a decision. Our sign bylaw is not part of the zoning bylaw, so it doesn't have to be filed and registered.
Oh, that's awesome.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
So a question I have, do we want to take a break now, or do we want to go ahead with the next petition now?
All right, so we have...
The next one is East Belcher.
I could go either way.
I'm fine continuing if anyone wants a break, I'm fine.
Continue.
Okay.
Barney, I had some problems with my mic, but I'm back now, I'm sorry.
Okay, so we're moving on to the continued hearing on Cook Realty, Kurt. So the time being 7:00 p.m., we have the continued appeal by J. Cook Realty LLC pursuant to Section 10.2.2.1 of the Code of the Town of Foxborough, Massachusetts, Chapter 275 zoning of a zoning enforcement decision dated February 22, 2023, from the Town of Foxborough Building Commissioner, Zoning Enforcement Officer, stating unlawful storage at 24 East Belcher Road is a violation of Chapter 275 zoning table 3-1, table of uses, use 3.1.6 D4 junkyard auto graveyard, properties located in the limited industrial district and the water resource protection overlay district. So I'm going to start off. When we were here back in September, on September 21, we required certain things to be done in advance of tonight's hearing. One was that inspections were to be conducted monthly between October and December, and we'll talk with Mr. Shippey about that shortly. Number two was a list of items on the property was to be provided to the building commissioner by September 30, 2023, together with an ongoing list of items removed, the date of removal for location removed to. Three was that a site plan application be submitted to the planning board prior to our December meeting, which means prior to tonight. So as I indicated, we received the list. We received the list as of December 14. I assume site plan review has not been applied for?
No, it has not. Mr. Cook has retained vague holiday to work on it, has not been filed.
When were they retained?
Very recently.
Okay.
They've been in discussions for a while.
Scott, can you tell us about your site visits?
There was a site visit back in October. Both Matt and I, Matt is the director of Board of Health, went out there. Visit, we did the site walk mainly on the adjacent portion of it, of the building, the opposite, if you're facing the building to the left side, and concentrated our efforts there. It did seem like some work was being done around the perimeter and stuff like that, but there was still substantial amount of material still visible and around there. I did notice that there were three new containers brought in. I don't know what they were for. I don't know if they were used for storage or moving stuff in there and then being shipped out, but there were three new containers, a couple of new, several new boy trailer, trailers were in there as well.
They're actually gone.
But pretty much the same.
So based on what you saw in October, well, have you, you weren't there in November or December?
No.
Okay, so based on what you saw in October, would you still have considered to be a junkyard at that point?
Yes.
Okay. And any reason that you were unable to be there in November or so far this month?
I made attempts to reach out to them, and it just was unsuccessful. I mean, they did reach out to me last week, and unfortunately, I was out of, out of state at that time.
Okay. So let me go to the, unless somebody else has some questions for Scott? The, the list that we received from, from Mr. Lovely, and I think everybody's gotten that, Diana, pass it on to everybody on the board.
I have additional copies if anybody needs one.
Thank you, I got them. Okay, so the first page referenced items stored. Where?
I believe these are items that are intended to remain on site, and they're either stored on the left-hand parcel or the right-hand parcel. And just correct me if I'm wrong, yeah.
Either parcel or, or both, I'm sorry.
I believe either. Is that, is, yes.
Jeff, can you put the mic, I mean, that mic is for the, everybody outside, I mean, just speak louder for the folks.
Okay, sure.
So in other words, this, this list is, everything will remain on the property, is that?
That is the intent of that list.
Okay. And the second page where it says items left, that's, that's also the first, those are items you plan on keeping on the property? 96 tires, the loader bucket, et cetera?
No, those are items, so there are really three pages.
Yep.
One page is items that had left the site by September.
Oh, I see.
And the other, the other list is items that have left the site, and that is actually through December 11 of this year. And so what, what he's doing, and I have, I have been to the site more recently, he's removing things, he's pulling things that were sort of in the woods. It's just a lengthy process, there's an incredible amount of stuff there. You know, he runs a small business, he has a small staff, he responds to emergencies throughout New England, so he's, he's doing his best to try to remove as much of this stuff as he can. You know, there's a financial component to the site plan review, he's working on that as well. So I, I think he continues to make progress, it's just a difficult, ongoing effort.
So the page that says items that have been taken out of 24 East Belcher, which starts off with a 30-yard container of tires, and it goes down to 15-yard box of heavy iron, the next page that says items left, continuation of previous list, those items have also been taken out?
Yes.
Okay. Where are they now?
Jeff?
Where are they now? I don't feel like answering that right now, I'm just...
Have they been returned to their owners, brought to a disposal site?
Yes, sometimes they'll be returned to owners, the tires have gone to the recycler.
I think the shipping containers that Mr. Shippey mentioned were brought onto the site to load things to be removed, and according to Mr. Cook, those are not on the site. If you visited the site right now, at any given time, there are more containers coming in, or trailers coming in, being loaded up, and then being shipped out. He is not accepting anything that is going to be there for any period of ti, any extended period of time. He's taking stuff short-term and stuff that needs to be repaired.
So I drove by a couple times yesterday. If I'm looking at the building from the street to the, I guess it would be the left of the building, but I'm looking at it, if you're the building, it's like where Jeff is, there were two, two trailers.
Along the road.
No, they were flushed next to the building. You're loading them to put stuff in to take off, is that it? Or are they intended to be there permanently?
Not permanently. I don't know which trailers you're talking about, but a couple left today, I don't...
As you're looking at the repair building from East Belcher to the left-hand side of the building?
Well, it'll be to my right, if I'm standing right in front of the building, it would be on...
Oh, okay, to the right, so that's usually an active zone for, for things that are being repaired. The primary use of the right-hand side of the building is, is auto repair, you know, heavy truck repair and things like that. The left-hand side is the site that had been, had a site plan permit for the soil and contractor yard, and that will be the, where the site plan is ultimately filed. I think the, more stuff can be removed from the left-hand side, whereas more of the stuff on the right-hand side is involved in the ongoing business, although anything that is really static should also be removed. You know, he's keeping tires, the tires that to you and I look like a nightmare, he can use for, and put them on trucks, tires and wheels when they need them. There are large loader tires that he also uses to repair loaders, and, you know, he's the person that people call when they need these repairs. I think we're working toward trying to store most of the tires in the building. He's trying to be responsive to any of Matt Brennan's, you know, complaints, store any fluids inside the building, et cetera. You know, it's a, it's an ongoing process, it's a, it's a heavy lift, and he's, he's trying with, to the best of his ability. It's just going to take some time.
So where have the items that have left East Belcher gone? So the tires are gone to the recycler, but there's, there's other things on here. So where have they been taken? Where have they gone?
Back to their owners, repairs done.
So starting with the...
Is that really something they need to know?
They, they want to know, because they want to make, is any of that stuff still in Foxborough?
No.
All right, none of it's been brought to Spring Street?
No.
Okay. That's probably critical path. So some of these things go back to their owners, some of them are out at job sites. I don't know if any of them have been scrapped or anything other than the tires, but that's what Jeff has told me, is that they're not in Foxborough, and they are off-site, and that they're, unless, are any of these items going to come back?
No plans for them to come back.
Okay, so that, the intent is that this is a one-way exodus.
So will not return to this site, or will not return to Foxborough?
Well, I would say Mr. Cook doesn't intend for them to return to his site.
Okay.
Any of this that has been returned to its owner...
Okay.
We, would be beyond our control.
Okay.
You know, I would suggest that none of it should come back to any of his properties.
And, and the items stored will all be stored outside, outside the building, correct?
Is that...
Yeah.
Yes?
Yes. Yes.
There is some storage space in the building, but it is primarily, you know, on the one end, it's sort of a high bay repair facilities where the trucks have to be able to, you know, be brought in and worked on inside. So we couldn't really load all the stuff up into that space.
You've got several tractors here, several trucks, are they operational?
Yes.
They're not owned by you? Or are they?
They are owned by me.
They are owned by you? So everything on the item stores, items stored list is your, under your ownership?
Uh, no.
I mean, are there items here that can be returned to their owners? And if so, why aren't they being?
All this stuff's probably everyday activities.
So these are actually either used in the towing business or in the repair business? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
You know, the shipping containers store some of the, you know, materials that he uses?
Excavator buckets? What would those be used for?
An excavator.
Every once in a while, you know, an excavator will, the bucket will be damaged and they can either be repaired or they can be replaced. So, you know, someone would call him and a bucket could be delivered.
Are there forklifts? How many are there and are they operational?
He has several lifts. Are any of them not operational?
Uh, one won't start immediately without, no. The other ones, uh...
He has several over on the left side, he's been using that to lift the stuff, load it. There's probably three or four over there.
So you have half a dozen tractors listed, I mean, what are you using those for? I mean, you're farming on Spring Street, you told us.
Yeah, those aren't farm tractors, they're road tractors.
What?
Those are like big trucks. Mack trucks.
And what are the big, how are they being used in the business?
It's what I do for work, I hook them up to trailers and move things around.
He, among other things, if somebody needs to move an excavator or a piece of equipment, that is what Cook does and also if somebody needs to tow a big truck, that would be something that they would do as well.
Mm-hmm.
So the big trucks and the big trailers, you know, many excavation contractors can't afford or don't choose to purchase their own low-bed trailers and big trucks to pull them, so they pay Jeff to do it. Same with, you know, trucks that break down on the highway, they have to be moved and towed.
Kurt, any questions?
Um, well, I'm getting back to what I was thinking last time. It seems reasonable for us to get a timeframe on when this is going to be accomplished. I understand it's a small business, I run a small business, I understand the demands that owners of small businesses have, but I think it's entirely reasonable to get a timeframe to get this completed so that we're not just, it's just too ambiguous for me. And I would feel better having a timeframe that's defined and, you know, that we can live by.
Well, as you may recall, Mr. Lovely said a year. We said, we said March, you know, our March meeting, but that's something I want to discuss. Eric, this is new to you.
Right.
You haven't seen the property at all. But do you have any thoughts, questions, just on what you're seeing on paper, what you've heard so far?
No, I didn't see the initial, I haven't seen what it looks like now either, but I'm just more concerned with the timeline as well, the progress that's being made, or at least getting an understanding of that, like Kurt said. But again, I haven't seen it as well.
Yep. Anybody from the public want to speak? I really didn't have to ask.
Bradley's Plaza, Bradley's Department Store.
Well, before them.
Before them.
There was somebody before them.
Was there?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure. You thought it might be Mammoth Mart.
Yeah.
I don't know.
We'll figure it out soon.
Yeah. Jeff might know, who was in Bradley's before Bradley's was?
There was another discount one, but I was pretty young when Bradley's opened and very excited.
You weren't that young, come on. Don't cook, 112 Spring Street. I agree with Kurt and you guys, what you're saying, there should be a timing limit, that's reasonable and I think everything's been reasonable for this project to be taken care of. I know, you know, what are you gonna do with the junk that's there? On the right side, there's more than trailers and tractors, there's a train, there's bulldozers, none of that stuff runs. It's been sitting there for years. We started out with this thing back in 2010. A gentleman on Mason Place had, had, had bring, well, you can't hear him. A person on Mason Place had brought up the conditions of the material coming down from East Belcher to Spring Street. Now, there's three shipping contain, or two shipping containers on the Spring Street properties that products from up on East Belcher keep coming down there. There's pickup trucks and box trucks that are moved from one location to the other. Deception seems to be a part of this project. We'd just like to see the place cleaned up, they, we just watched the area go downhill and I know nobody would want this on their property. If we took all that stuff and put it on the town comm, and how long do you think that would last in the town? People would be in an uproar. So we'd just like to see it cleaned up. There's no reason for it, it's just junk and we have a bylaw and we just want to see the bylaws enforced in Foxborough. Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, sir.
David Young, 71 Spring Street. I'm just curious to hear if Mr. Shippey could elaborate why he was unsuccessful to have a meeting in October and November. And secondly, I think we absolutely have to have these site inspections to validate what's being said, so that's my concern, I just want it cleaned up too, so. I understand you have a small business to run, but we gotta make it a priority, we all have priorities in our life, so let's make it a priority, that's it.
Mr. Chair, you want me to answer that?
I'm gonna answer for you.
Okay.
So, on November, I think it was 21st, Mr. Shippey contacted Mr. Lovely to request two things, one was to schedule another inspection, second was for, actually, Mr. Lovely and Mr. Shippey and I to meet. And we didn't get it, or Mr. Shippey didn't get a response. I don't know if I was copied or it went to me as well, but there was no response until December 14th. So, that's why there wasn't, not an inspection in November. Mr. Shippey was away on the 15th and what was Monday, the 18th. So obviously he hasn't had an opportunity to get there this week. Okay. Any other questions? So, this is where I am. There's been a little progress, which is satisfactory, but there hasn't been enough progress, which obviously is unsatisfactory. I think that we could have, at our meeting in May, made a decision that it was a junkyard. The fact that we've continued the matter and trying to work with, with Mr. Cook is indicative of the fact that even though we didn't formally decide that it was a junkyard, that was the, you know, position all of us took from the site plan, the site walk that we had in May. The major reason that I suggested we try to work with them was my concern that if we made a decision that it was a junkyard, there'll be an immediate appeal and then it would be sitting in court for a lengthy period of time. I'm getting sort of to the point where I don't care anymore, you know, let some judge and some court-appointed master, you know, deal with it. So my thought, as I was sitting here tonight, or actually even before, when I was thinking about what I wanted to say, was we really have three alternatives. Number one is we can make a decision tonight that it's a junkyard. And then if Mr. Cook appeals it, let the court deal with it. Number two, we can carry this through to the March meeting, which is what we had decided in the last month. And number three, and this was really the one that I was leaning to, was that we continue the matter to January. We do a site walk between now and then and we make a decision in January as to whether, A, there's been enough progress that we want to continue, continue, you know, working towards cleanup, or B, that it's a junkyard and we go from there. That would be my, I don't want to say strong recommendation, but recommendation that we continue to January, we do a site walk, you know, before that January meeting. You know, as I said, I drove by there yesterday, I actually drove by there twice, which means I went by it four times. Now, I can't see what's in back of the building, but there's an awful lot of stuff in front of it. And if, on the basis of that drive-by, someone were to say to me, "What do you think of this property?", I would say, "It's a mess." And whether it's a junkyard or not, I would probably say, "Yeah." But it, there's definitely a lot of stuff there that, I'm sure some of it is used in your business, but it's not clear to me that all of it is and it's not clear to me that some of it can't go elsewhere. So that's my thought. Ms. Mellon?
So that gives us roughly four weeks
Yep.
to schedule a site walk, if we were to take option three.
Yep. Well, you know, again, I want to do that before the January meeting.
Right.
Yep.
Right, so it would give us, you know, say, within the next three and a half weeks, let's say.
Yes.
We try, we would try to schedule, we would schedule the site walk.
Yep.
And then we would make a decision in January.
And the decision could be that we'll extend the period, it could be that, you know, we're fed up with it.
Mm-hmm. Well, I definitely, I definitely think, and I know you're not suggesting this, that, you know, option number one, deciding tonight, I guess I'm not, really not ready to decide tonight. We have been giving this some time and, so I don't want to, I don't want to decide tonight because there has been some progress. So I guess the question is, do we want to
And we really need to see what progress has been.
Yes, yes, and I'm, I am unclear as to how much there has been. I would be agreeable to option three, having a site walk and then discussing this again in January and whether we want to continue it on until March or whether we're deciding at the January meeting.
Mm-hmm.
I think that that sounds logical, just because, I mean, I haven't seen it since October and would want to really see with my own eyes behind, you know, what progress has been made. So I think, you know, if we can see it in the next couple of weeks, that would be ideal.
Mm-hmm.
And then we can decide, you know, if we want to continue it from there.
Kurt?
I mean, that sounds, you know, fair to me, to do that, if there has been some progress, let's see it. But I stand behind what I said earlier, I think that, you know, we have to have guardrails, we have to have schedules with everything we do.
So given what Kurt said, are we, do we have any directives before we meet again in January? Create, if this is the, if the option three is what we're doing, we are going to be scheduling a site walk, having the site walk, and do we have anything specific that we want done before we are back in this room?
I guess as much cleared up and cleaned out as possible. You know, again, it's been since May since we've been there.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I would say a good faith effort, I mean, let's just be fair to everybody. It's fair to the neighbors
Yep.
to do this, it's fair to the town and it's fair to Mr. Cook. I mean, let's show a good faith effort to clean this thing up.
Would you like another list?
And make some decisions going forward.
You know, I think looking at the property and seeing what's there will give us a better ideas to, you know, what, what items are part of the business and need to be there. I mean, you know, again, when I drove by the other day, there's still that old, you know, railroad car. I don't think that's being used as part of the business. I noticed the bicycles are on the list, are they gone?
Most of them.
Most of them? There were a lot of them, so.
Most of them were gone at the time.
Okay.
There's still quite a bit left, but most of them were gone.
But I think it'll, going there will give us a better opportunity to see what, not only what has been done, but get a better perception as to what is not part of the business and needs to go elsewhere.
When is our January meeting, Barney?
18th? What date is, Diana?
I'm pretty sure it's the 18th. Yeah, January 18th.
Your way, I know.
Yes. On a beach.
When are you leaving?
I'm leaving on, I won't, I'm leaving on the 10th.
Just thinking for the visit portion of the...
I've got until probably the 9th, January 9th.
Well, again, it's our decision in January, so we'll, you know, if we can schedule the site walk when you're met are available.
Absolutely.
And then, you know, go from there.
Great.
So that's my suggestion, that we, again, continue this to January. And I'd like to, at this point in time, Kurt, when we met in September, we said that the deadline for completion would be March 31. I don't know whether that's reasonable at this point in time or it's just something we should no longer hold ourselves to, your thought?
I think it's still a reasonable date and I think that we'll know more when we see it in January.
Mm-hmm. So maybe continue the hearing to our January meeting, extend to the end of March, when our decision has to be reached. And schedule a site walk.
Yes.
So, site walk has to be the first two weeks of January?
You can go without me, I'm happy. No, but I will be leaving, I'll be out of office on the, by the 9th.
By the 9th.
So the 10th, I will not be available. So the 10th, I will not be available from 10th on.
Good.
So the 9th is...
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Yes.
Schedule something that morning?
I am free, beginning at 11:30 on the 9th.
Ooh, the 9th. And Scott, you're leaving the 10th, you said?
Yes.
How about Monday, the 8th?
I am not available.
Okay.
Are you looking for mornings?
Yeah, the problem, I have a problem on the 9th, starting at 11:30.
Oh. I could do Wednesday, the 3rd.
How about Friday, Thursday, the 4th?
Right. No, it's going to happen.
I could do Thursday.
I have those two days.
I'm sorry?
I'm available those two days.
Thursday, the 4th?
Yep.
I can do Thursday, the 4th, after 10:30.
According to this calendar, I have the...
Kurt, are you available on January 4?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Tell me a time.
After 10:30?
You want to say 11 o'clock? Is that good for you, Jeff?
I think we can make it work. Jeff's not sure. We'll try to make it work. Let's plan on that.
Okay. So the January meeting is when? The 18th?
We're doing 11? 10:30?
When?
11.
So 11 o'clock on the 4th?
Barney, somebody has a question.
Go ahead. Yep.
Is it possible to request the building inspector or other zoning board to make sure that in the process, none of this stuff is brought down to the Spring Street properties?
I don't know how we could do that.
I have no jurisdiction over the Spring Street.
So we let them bring the junk down from East Belcher to Spring Street? They thought this stuff had to go out of Foxborough.
There's no way I can police that.
I can.
I can't sit there for 24 hours and watch, watch that.
You don't have to.
Oh, I do.
It's just done all the time. That's why he has those shipping containers.
But 73 Spring Street is in the court.
Yeah, I know that. But the other properties, he owns three properties.
All right, so we'll continue the hearing to the 18th of January. We'll extend to the end of March. Jeff, you want to sign this? The time at which we have to render our decision. We'll do a site walk on the 4th at 11 o'clock. You'll get Matt to join us?
I will try to, I'll reach out to Matt soon.
Whatever you can do between now and then would be helpful. Okay, thank you. So, again, we'll hear again on this on January 18th. Thank you.
Thank you.
Want to take a break?
Yes, please.
So we're going to take a break before we do the next petition. We'll break for about five or seven minutes. Are you Mr. McDonald? Hopefully you'll be able to...
I'm muted.
Mr. McDonald is on the Zoom.
Mr. McDonald's on Zoom? Is that what he said?
Yes. I don't think he hears it.
Oh, yeah, Brent McDonald.
7:10 PM, we have the continued public hearing by the Guild for Human Services, seeking a special permit pursuant to the code of the town of Foxborough, Massachusetts, Chapter 275 zoning, Section 3.1.6, Table 3-1, Use Group F1, to allow a single-family home to use, to be used as a five-bedroom independent living home for residents with disabilities, as well as any other special permits, variances, or findings as may be required with respect to the foregoing. Property is located at 3 Bailey Street in the R40 Residential and Agricultural District, is not located in any restrictive overlay district. This is how I'm going to handle the matter. First, we're going to hear from the applicant, and we'll probably have questions for the applicant. Then I'll allow public comment and public questions, and after that, we will reach, hopefully be able to reach a decision. Before we do that, though, Mr. Hogberg has a disclosure to make.
I had submitted a disclosure related to a conflict or appearance of conflict of interest relating to the Guild for Human Services. I just disclosed the fact that my cousin works for that organization, I believe, out of the Concord Mass location, and as far as I know, she is not involved in this matter in any way, so I just wanted to disclose that.
And that's been filed as required with the town clerk. Mr. McDonald?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I apologize that I'm unable to be there in person this evening. For the record, my name is Brent McDonald. I'm an attorney at Nutter, McConan &amp; Fish, with offices at 155 Seaport Boulevard in Boston, representing the applicant, the Guild for Human Services. With me today are Yvette Rodriguez, the Chief Financial Officer of the Guild, and Maureen Costello Shea, the Chief Program Officer. I believe I saw both of them in the front row with you tonight, as well as Hayden Rock, the Director of Facilities on Zoom. As you indicated, the Guild wishes to use this single-family residence as a five-bedroom home, housing five individuals with intellectual disabilities. Before I get into specifics of our request, I did want to turn this over to Yvette to give an overview of who the Guild is, so you have some familiarity about what they do, and then to Maureen, who's going to give an overview specifically about the residential care program, after which I will give some remarks with respect to the zoning and the relief requested. So I'd ask Yvette if she could sit at the table, as well as Maureen, and just give that brief overview of the Guild.
Thank you. So the Guild for Human Services was founded in the 40s, and then formally incorporated in 1952. At the time, the Guild was called the Protestant Guild for the Blind. Over the years, the organization's services have evolved, and currently, we serve folks with intellectual disabilities and autism. We run, we own and operate about 24 properties. The building in Concord, which is our headquarters, and also a special education school that's licensed by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. It is a special ed school for students age 6 through 22. The other 23 properties are single-family homes, just like the one here in Foxborough that we use for residential services. Most of the students at the school live with us, and then once they're 22, they go to our adult program, which is licensed by the state, the Department of Disabilities. Those homes are permanent placements, so the individuals that are placed in those homes are with us for as long as they can live independently. Maureen oversees programming, and she can speak specifically to the services and the program at the house.
So the house in Foxborough is part of our adult residential program. We have 15 homes in eastern Massachusetts, each of which is home to five adults with intellectual disabilities and autism. They're all licensed and funded through the Department of Developmental Services, and the residents of the home require 24-hour support because of their level of intellectual disability and their need to receive supervision and support around personal care, going out in the community, et cetera. We have homes, this is, would be the only home we have in Foxborough presently. In the area, we have a home in Walpole, a home in Norfolk, a home in Dedham, and then our other homes are located kind of west of Boston and north of Boston, on Burlington, Billerica, those areas. We open the homes at the request of the Department of Developmental Services, based on individuals who either are turning 22 or have lived at home with their families, and their families are aging or are no longer able to support them. And the goal is that really those five individuals will live together for as long as they choose to, or as long as the program's able to meet their needs. You know, if they had a need then for a barrier-free home or that kind of thing, then, then that's when they would might, right, move, but there's not a in-and-out of, these five people live here today, next year, five different people live there. It really is, is meant to be a long-term residential home through Department of Developmental Services. And so there are direct care staff that work in the house. Each house has a house manager, and then nursing and clinicians who provide support, mainly training, and then oversight of the direct care staff as they provide supports to the folks that live in the home.
So you said five individuals?
Maximum, yes.
Maximum.
Yeah, I mean, DDS regulations around single-family residences and the state building code is a five, five-person is considered a single-family home.
And are they all male, or all female, or mixed?
Right now, the group we anticipate living in the home would all be young men, who are all turning 22.
So they'll all be around 22, or they're...
They all are moving in as they turn 22, but, you know, they, you know, the plan is they'll live there for, you know, really for the rest of their life unless something should change.
And how many employees would there be?
So generally, there would be three or four staff on at a time.
Is that 24 hours a day?
24 hours a day. Generally, individuals go to a day program during the day. However, you know, kind of during COVID, some of that has, has slowed down and changed, but they would have staff with them. Anyhow, no one would ever be in the home without staff support. You know, if there's one person home, there would be a staff person there.
Are the day programs run by your organization?
No, they're not.
Okay. So those are educational programs, or...
So, you know, as the Department of Developmental Services programs are really meant to be kind of a home for people who need support, so staff are helping them to learn how to be more independent with personal care, and cooking, and going out in the community, and doing those kinds of things. The group of folks who'll be living in the home all have intellectual disabilities and autism. One of the individuals is blind. The other folks are generally non-speaking and need, you know, use augmentative communication.
What would visitation be like at the home?
So, you know, folks' families would certainly come and visit them, or, you know, one of the young man's family lives just a couple miles away, that they'd be coming, picking him up, taking him home, dropping him back, you know, taking him home overnight. Our families tend to be really involved, but obviously, as individuals age, some of that changes, but we do have, you know, families who would come and visit on the weekends or take people out.
So the day programs would be Monday through Friday, typically?
Monday through Friday, they would, staff would drive them to a day program from 9:00 to 3:00, and they would come back, you know, once they have a day program. If they are home and aren't in a day program, there is staff with them all the time.
So this is a three-bedroom home? As it was, as it was constructed, it's a three-bedroom home, so what, how were you
So when we purchased...
Housing the five individuals?
When we purchased the home, the home had already been renovated.
Okay.
It's a split-level house, and so had been, was listed and advertised as a five-bedroom home, and had been renovated. I mean, that's, you know, that's how...
If I may, the permit, building permit did not indicate that those, the renovations were two new bedrooms, and that's the issue here. Well, that's one of the issues that we can clean up, and it's a minor issue. And it is a single-family home, and I have to designate it as a single-family home. So we would just have to need paperwork to sit there and clarify that this was done as a five, two or five-bedroom home. They just did, said basement renovations. They were not specific on bedrooms, so we need to have paperwork to clarify that.
Yeah, I think they added bedrooms and a bathroom.
Yes, but...
Yeah.
They did not indicate in the application that it was a, they were adding two bedrooms, because that also goes towards the water connection and sewer connections, too, because that actually increases the sewer usage. So that would have to be clarified as well.
So I understand, was that the prior owner?
The prior owner, yes.
Also, the assessments record show only three bedrooms.
The assessments record also only show a three-bedroom.
When we purchased it, we purchased it under the understanding that it was listed as a five-bedroom.
Yes.
So what specifically needs to be done further to allow you to accommodate five individuals, and obviously, you don't have to build new bedrooms, correct?
No.
So it's just the...
The house needed us to do really nothing. I mean, if we had purchased any other split-level home, we would have put in the request to turn it into a five-bedroom.
It's more of a paperwork kind of thing, so just crossing the Ts and dotting the Is.
So from your perspective, it's...
It's just a paperwork, it's a formality.
And whatever permits you have to issue, then?
Yep, it's just one, probably one permit, and they're saying, oh, we're converting those two rooms into bedrooms. And then we would just do our final inspection on it, make sure the means of egress is adequate enough, and the smokes and COs are adequate enough, and then be done.
Is this a septic system?
No, it's on, it's on sewer, so they would have to get, they would have to pay the new additional fees to those two new bedrooms, and they are aware of that.
That's probably better than having to redo a septic system.
Absolutely, absolutely.
We wouldn't have been able to purchase it a septic without having that sorted out beforehand.
Thanks.
Yeah, I mean, in fact, if that were the case, DDS wouldn't even have okayed us looking at the site if it were going to be a five-bedroom and didn't have a five-bedroom septic.
Yeah, I've been working with the property manager, and he's aware of the little nuances that have to be done, and they're all minor nuances.
Are any of the staff also living there, or they just, they're just there during their respective
Right.
periods of work, then? Okay.
How many vehicles do you anticipate having there over the course of, say, a typical Monday or Tuesday?
So the house has one vehicle that's the van for the residents, and then, you know, at any given time, there would be three or four in addition to that van. Obviously, when shift changes, people come and go. When people are a day program, there would be just a shift from 3:00 to 11:00, and then a shift from 11:00 PM to 9:00 AM. And then on the weekends, generally, staff work 9:00 AM to 11:00 PM, and another shift works 11:00 PM to 9:00 AM. When folks are in a day program, which, you know, is something that DDS is working on for folks as they move in.
And based on the disabilities the individuals have, I assume that none of them drive?
Oh, no.
Okay. Great, questions?
No questions.
Kurt, do you have any questions?
Not at this time, Barney, no.
Okay. Anything else from here? Scott, anything else that you have?
Would there be a dumpster on site?
No.
No? Okay.
We've contracted with, with a company to do trash pickup.
Okay. I would ask you to reach out to the Board of Health Director, just on that aspect, because sometimes they require group homes, even though they fall on the residential aspect of it, to have a dumpster on site, because things happen. But I would just, just out of common courtesy, just to reach out to them and talk to him.
We had a matter similar to this a few months ago, and the Board of Health Director did want a dumpster on site. It was also for five individuals, notwithstanding the fact that there was going to be trash pickup there. He felt that was the best way to, to address issues of that nature, so...
Yeah, I mean, it's not something we historically have done, because it sticks out in the neighborhood and actually doesn't look resident. out in the neighborhood and actually doesn't look residential, and so that's why we've tried to have the same kind of barrels that anybody else would have with, with commercial pickups at our other homes.
Yep. Okay.
But certainly.
I don't know their regulations, so I can't speak of his regulations, so.
Yeah, I don't think it was a regulation, I think it was just something Matt wanted to.
Request.
Yeah, facilitate, okay.
Just wanted to make you aware of that, so.
Thank you.
So you would characterize this program as being purely residential?
That's how every home that we have is characterized, is that really, and, you know, that they're considered single-family residences for.
And the educational programs are off-site, other than teaching somebody how to, you know, care for oneself?
And cook, and go out in the, you know, access to community and that kind of thing.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
Okay, I'm going to open it to public comment. There are several rules, however. Number one is you have to go to the podium. Number two, you have to identify yourself by name and address. Number three, be as succinct and direct and to the point as possible, and please don't be repetitive. And number four, this is not a debate, it's just to give us your comments, your questions. If there are any questions, if the applicant has to answer, we'll direct the applicant to answer. But again, it's not a debate, it's just to express your thoughts and concerns.
The house is diagonally across from Three Bailey. I had a question. So this is going to be adults, 22 and above? Are any of the people there, I know they're classified?
No, 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 ask us.
Pardon?
Ask us, and we'll.
Okay. Are any of the people, are all of the people autistic, or are they recovering from any addictions, any of the other things that could be disabling?
Okay, what I heard was everybody either has an intellectual disability or is autistic. My understanding from, not just what you said, but the research that I've done, is that the Guild does not, I don't want to say the word cater, it's the wrong word, but you're, the population you serve are not individuals who are recovering from alcoholism or addiction?
These are all individuals with intellectual disabilities and autism.
Okay, the other one is, they put swings outside, and that's why we thought there were children there, but there's not. These are all adults.
So adults with autism, you know, individuals with autism enjoy swinging and sensory motion and that kind of thing, and so that's why some of our homes do have a swing set? Because from a developmental level, that's something that they, that the residents who are moving into this house enjoy, is going on a swing. And, you know, in some of our homes, folks go to a local park, but not all playgrounds are the size that an adult can comfortably swing, and so that's something we have in many of our, our homes, that the folks that live there just really enjoy, and I think that speaks to the developmental level of the folks that are going to be living in the house.
And my other question was, I know you have staff there, but there's many cars now parked in the street, right in front of the house, and with all the kids and the school buses coming in, and everybody's walking by these houses, can they get the cars off the street into the driveway?
I mean, I would think that would be something that the house manager would probably need to, to address, to try to keep as much, you know, vehicles in the driveway as, you know, he or she possibly can, so.
Absolutely, I mean, we still have work going on at the house, which is also why there's been more vehicles there, but we can absolutely work on making sure, I mean, we try to work on that in all of our homes, that people are in the driveway as much as possible.
Okay, thank you.
That's.
We also have a letter from you that we'll read into the record, but.
Yes.
Okay.
Fine, thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is Joe Tolan, I'm at One Bailey. I'm a little confused about the zoning aspect of this. Are we changing the zoning from residential to something else? Is that what's going on here?
No, we're not changing the zoning. The bylaw has a provision for institutional uses, and it's broad enough to really encompass a setting such as this. So what the bylaw says is all land and buildings for housing people suffering from physical limitations. Then it goes on to say hospitals, orphanages, sanitariums. But the wording itself is broad enough that we've considered it to encompass and cover programs such as this one. So the answer to your question is no, we're not changing the zoning bylaw. What we're trying to do is determine whether a special permit for this program fits within the context of that definition.
Okay, so if the Guild pulls out, goes under, goes under, say, in a year, somebody can't buy the house and make it a boarding house, is that correct?
I don't think boarding houses permitted in the R-40, is it? I don't believe so.
I don't believe so.
Let me, let.
Unfortunately.
The house is situated in the R-40 district, which requires homes theoretically on 40,000 square-foot lots. House was constructed before that zoning bylaw requirement came to effect, which is why this property only has, and probably all the houses in your neighborhood have less than 40,000 square feet of area. There are uses that are permitted in that district, and uses that are prohibited. Single-family homes are permitted. Multifamily dwellings are not permitted. I don't believe that boarding houses are. If we grant a special permit, it's going to be specific to this organization, so that if they pull out at any point in time, they cannot convey the permit to another party to run a different kind of program. They would have to come back to us for authorization.
Okay, well, appreciate that. So just my final question is, when there's going to be these five adults at this facility, in this residence, all night, how many, how many of the Guild people are going to be there to supervise them?
When the individuals, say, are sleeping at night?
Hopefully, yes.
Two or three? Definitely your house manager.
Yeah, one of the, I mean, on the overnight staff shift, we will have two or three awake overnight staff. We don't have a sleep overnight staff, there are awake overnight staff.
So there's always going to be two or three people there?
Yes.
And they're awake.
Yes. Yes.
And I, last thing, I did notice, I looked at the job descriptions for these people that'll be there overnight, and it does say that they need to be able to, be able to restrain people, so I'm assuming that they're going to have the training, so that if they get out of control, they're not running out of the house, or, I don't know, I mean, just if they have to be able to restrain people, that, that kind of raised my eyebrows a little bit.
So what kind of training do you?
So upon hire, they go through a two-week training program with the, with the organization before they actually go on to a shift. It requires them to be certified in what's called CPI restraining, so it's a therapeutic hold, or a de-escalation tactic. And so everyone goes through that, and they're required to recertify, is it annually or biannually?
Annually.
Annually.
Now, how often does the state come by to make sure that everything is being done consistent with their requirements?
So.
They say the state, it's DDS.
So everybody who lives in the home has what's called a service coordinator, which for this home, the DDS Newton-South Norfolk area office is in Walpole, and so the service coordinator comes on a monthly basis to check in on the home and what's going on in the home, and then DDS licensed is the home, and does a full licensing audit every two years.
Okay.
Just final question. Have you passed all those audits?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Have they passed all the audits?
Yeah, I mean, all the, you know, all the audits for all our DDS programs, you know, we're licensed every two years, they review mid-year, and we also have what's called CARF certification, which is a kind of international accreditation, that they come out and visit kind of every program and, and do a review, and provide you accreditation or not.
Yeah.
That just, you just went through that cycle a couple weeks ago.
That's the equivalent of joint commission type of certification.
And are those audits available for review?
So DDS has a website where they post all the, every review that's done of every agency that operates any services funded by DDS, whether they are residential or day services, on their website.
And our program policies are on our website. We're just waiting for our final accreditation report to come on, and that will be on the website as well.
And specifically, in response to your question, boarding houses are not allowed in the, in the R-40.
That's good to know.
With respect to the staffing, does DDS or your organization have any required ratios per resident?
So every home's ratio is a little bit different, based on who lives in the home. All of our homes in our adult program have a minimum of two staff on the overnight to five, and three staff during waking hours to five. But again, that differs from home to home, because for instance, somebody who's blind needs a different level of support to navigate their home, and complete their personal care, go out in the community.
Okay, thank you.
No, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Leon Bowen from Five Bailey Street, the next-door neighbor. And we've discussed the conversion, or acceptance of the house as a five-bedroom, but in addition to that, on the application, it talks about any other applications, variances, or permits that might be required. What would they be? As far as I know, there's only been one application so far, and that's to accept the, the two downstairs bedrooms as bedrooms.
There are none. That's something that when we prepared the hearing notice, that Diana and I decided to put in there as a sort of just-in-case, because we didn't have enough information about the application. There are times when an application is requesting a specific, either variance or a special permit, and we decide that it might need something in addition. So sometimes we draft a hearing notice to basically cover that kind of circumstance.
So if there were other situations, you would talk about them today?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and just again, to give you an example, the very first application we considered tonight, he was just requesting a special permit, but we also had the similar wording in. We determined that the special permit was not appropriate, but we could grant a finding. So the hearing notice did cover that circumstance.
Okay, thank you.
But there's, there are no other, if they were doing something external, they might have needed a special permit, or perhaps a variance, but there's no external construction being done.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening, Jimmy Head, Seven Bailey. Just a few questions. What's the difference between a boundary-free home and its alternative?
Could you ask the question again, in quite here?
What is the difference between a boundary-free home and whatever its alternative is?
I think it's a barrier-free?
Barrier-free.
So if, so a home that would, if a home were being designed and built for people who are in wheelchairs, or needed ramps, or kind of needed accessible bathrooms, then that's a barrier-free home that would meet ADA requirements. Typically, a group home is based on the needs of the people that are there, and most of the folks that we support just can live in a regular home, kind of similar to anybody else.
Okay.
We do have homes that are barrier-free in other locations because of who the people are that live in that home.
My second question is, with the whole zoning, five adults, three adults, it was kids at one point type thing, do we have any recourse, or is this just kind of a Q and A, and they're going to get their permits?
When you say recourse, if we, and any decision that we render is subject to appeal.
Okay.
Okay? Appeal is either to the Superior Court, or to the Land Court.
Superior Court where, in Dedham?
Yes, either Norfolk Superior Court, or the Land Court.
Okay.
And that's any decision that, that we render, doesn't matter what it is.
Okay. So that's where these, these questions would be directed, because it seems like it's kind of already a done deal?
If you or anybody else wants to appeal whatever decision, by the same token, if we were to turn this down, and they wanted to appeal, the matter would have to go either to, the appeal would have to be taken in Norfolk Superior Court, or the Massachusetts Land Court.
Okay. All right. And my third question is, what is the typical turnover rate for their residents? Because it's not really a residence, if you have people coming in and out, it seems to me like it's more of a business right next to my house.
Well, again, what they've indicated is that the desire, the intent is that these individuals will live there.
Well, that's a desire and intent.
As long as possible.
That's not the facts.
Well, people unfortunately will pass away, and there may be other reasons that somebody lives, but what's your turnover rate?
I mean, very low. We have homes that have been hoping for years that the same five people live in that home, the, you know, we've had only people leave because their parents might move to another state, and they move them to live closer to them. But the goal is that, you know, there are five individuals who are going to have similar needs and live together.
How about the turnover rate as far as staff?
I mean, there's a workforce issue in terms of dealing, you know, with folks, but, but as an agency, and our adult program has, you know, one of the lowest turnover rates of our peer agencies in the state, and, and that data's, you know, been compiled by our trade association, but, you know, there, there is turnover of direct care staff in any group home.
Much more than that.
And I know you have a fairly, fairly significant number in Foxborough.
Yeah, and it's more than that. I have a mother-in-law who lives in an assisted-living facility, and they have the same turnover issue, yeah?
As far as the placements, they're lifetime placements, and so our hope would be that they would be with us for as long as they're physically able to be in the house.
Yeah, and I mean, and that's really the goal of Department of Developmental Services, is to find homes for people to live in, you know, and be able to be members of, of the community.
So are the individuals who reside in any of your programs, they basically, I don't want to say given to you, but directed to you by DDS?
So DDS refers folks to, to agencies to provide supports for them who are priority for residential placement.
And then do you interview them, or screen them before?
I mean, we work to try and find groupings of people that are compatible to live together, that have similar needs.
A lot of times, they graduate from our school as well, so they're, they're not new to us, if you will, they've been with us for some time, and so depending, there might be a group of students that are graduating together, and so they'll move together into the home, so they're not new to us and have been with us for some time.
And anyone who would move in with them would be someone who would be a good match.
Okay, thank you.
And with regards to the staffing, you yourself mentioned staffing shortages. And with regards to the staffing, you yourself mentioned staffing shortages. Quick Google search reveals all sorts of reviews and things of that nature from past employees of the guild. And a lot of it isn't very good, talking about toxic work environment, things of that nature. So if we do go from a three-bedroom to a five-bedroom, are they going to even be able to staff it adequately enough that I know my kids are going to be safe at the bus stop in front of their house in the morning?
I think the answer we heard is yes, but...
Yes.
You're confident that you can?
Yes.
So how is that supposed to make me confident?
Because we wouldn't be licensed if we can, and we wouldn't be able to move our residents into the houses if we didn't have enough staff to staff them. And so when there are vacancies in the positions, we have part-timers who fill the slots, we have staff from other houses who pick up shifts, we are required by law to satisfy ratios. So we will always meet the ratios.
So when you have somebody calling sick, do you force over an 11 to 9:00 AM shift to work the next shift?
We will open up the shift to someone else, and someone will pick up the shift. We are required by law to have ratios filled at all times.
Well, I understand that, but with the staffing shortage...
Again, this is not a debate.
I'm not debating.
Well, ask us the question in the file.
I'm conversating with her about the question.
Well, that's not what I want to have.
That's all I have for today.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Anyone else?
Not really good at speaking, so I'll give this a shot. My name is Brenda Piper. I live at Nine Bradner Street, and that house is directly behind their house on a corner.
I'm sorry, which street?
Nine Bradner. I travel a lot, and I came home like a month ago when I saw this building. What I'm trying to get at is, this is a residential neighborhood, and when you walk, when you drive down that block, this particular, it's not really a house anymore. It's, it looks like a building to me. It takes away from the neighborhood. I know you're looking for questions here. I'm a little upset, but I'm concerned about my property value. I'm concerned that this is supposed to be a program for six to 22-year-olds, yet 22-year-olds are coming in, and they're supposed, this is supposed to be a lifetime thing or for the duration of however long they're there. I just want some reassurances, number one. I don't feel very safe anymore. I drive their house. That house is situated in such a manner that it has a curve. The other day, I almost got hit by a neighbor because they had three vans and cars parked right in front of their house. I had to get into the ongoing traffic. It's a small neighborhood. So for safety reasons, we saw each other, no accident, obviously, but if that's going to be the norm, that really does take away from our neighborhood. It doesn't look like it belongs there. I'm trying to be as courteous and respectful as possible, but it really, it looks huge. The neighbor that was there before, the neighbor that was there forever, had three bedrooms now. From what I understand, that neighbor sold her house, and then bingo, bango, boingo, we got five bedrooms now. How did that happen? So who's protecting, who's protecting the residents that are already living there that are impacted by this? I mean, where do we stand in our neighborhood? We've been here for over 25 years in this neighborhood. It's changed so much over the last year, much less since this building has been here. I just, I don't have a specific question. I just, I don't know who to talk to about my frustration in that I'm watching my neighborhood that I raised my sons and just go. It's disappearing. We have so many changes between things that are happening at the hotels, 248-unit Sylvan whatever. And now we have this disability home right inside our neighborhood. I'm worried about our safety for our children that walk by. I walk by all the time. Now I have to go around three or four cars at any given time and walk into the street to just take my morning walk. I don't mind doing that, but it's, it takes away from why I moved there in the first place. It was a nice, comfortable little neighborhood, and now I don't think of it that way anymore. I just, I don't, I don't have a question. I, actually, if I do have a question, it would be, is the program for, I'm just confused. If it's supposed to be a program for six to 22-year-olds, why are 20, and it's supposed to be a lifelong thing, why are 22-year-olds? I thought it was just they can come in at six, and then by 22, they have to be on their way, or no? I'm just misunderstanding it.
But my understanding is that the...
So our agency operates two different programs.
Right.
The Guild School that is for...
And that's for the 22...
Six to 22-year-olds, and an adult residential program that's for folks over 22.
So this is the adult, this is the adult resident. So they will live there for as long as they possibly can?
Yes.
Okay. All right. All right. Thank you for letting me vent. That's all I have. I'm just sad. I want what's best for everybody, people with disabilities included. I just don't think it really has a place in our particular neighborhood. It really does stand out. But that's it, my piece. Thank you for letting me talk.
To respond though to one of your points, there's been no external construction.
The size of the house has not changed one bit.
Since construction?
All the, all the work was done interior. So the footprint of the house has not expanded.
Yeah, I think it was, it's got like a fortress kind of fence around it now.
Fences are not, not required to have permits.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Kim, you want to read the letter if you would? We received a letter that Kim will read me to the record.
Yes. December 14th, 2023, to Board of Appeals, Town of Foxborough, Barnett over at Chairman, CC, Neighbors of Three Bailey Street, from Thomas Navea. I hope I didn't, thank you, sorry. To Sears Road, Foxborough, concerning the application of special permit for Three Bailey Street to be a group home of independent living for residents with disabilities. I live diagonally across the street from Three Bailey Street. Approximately 180 feet away, I have lived there for 51 years. It is a quiet neighborhood that has all dead-end streets and is composed of working couples with children of all ages and retirees. School buses stop at South High Street to pick up and deliver middle and high school children. They then walk to their homes in the development. The elementary children are picked up and delivered in front of my house, and they all walk home past Three Bailey Street. It has not been made clear to us as to what disabilities, what the disabilities of the proposed residents are. If it's just physical, that's one thing. If it's intellectual or mental disabilities or recovering people, that is a whole different thing. Number one, I think you know that permitting a group home for people with disabilities will affect the value of our homes as well as limiting potential buyers for even looking at buying nearby homes. People with small children or buyers planning on having a family will just walk away from living next to a group home for people with some of the aforementioned disabilities. Number two, group homes are not as benign as their mission states. Last year, 2022, in the town Lexington, Mass, at a group home, resident Brendan Riley was hanging out a window yelling that someone was trying to kill him. A jogger called the police. When they arrived, he began threatening the police with a knife. When he lunged at the officer, the resident was shot, and he was killed in front of the group home. This shooting was witnessed by 36 nearby residents, both adults and children. This November, the court ruled it was a justifiable shooting. The irony is that his family is now suing the town of Lexington for not having specially-trained officers and failing to have a social worker or a mental health counselor available to handle people with disabilities. I have attached articles of the above incident. This is the third year in four years in Massachusetts that mentally disabled people have been killed by police for trying to stab an officer. Number three, in 2022, we as a neighborhood had our own drama with a mentally disabled person. A juvenile with issues broke into a neighborhood house in the night. The juvenile was in their bedroom. The sleeping wife woke, sounded the alarm, and the juvenile fled. Foxborough Police investigated and apprehended the person, and they were sent to a facility. This incident has turned out much worse, could have turned out much worse if it was a different house, which would have been a tragedy for all involved. In closing, if you approve this special permit, yes, we will lose monetary value of our homes, but more importantly, we will feel less safe in our homes than we were before. Thank you.
Anybody else? Just any final comments before we get to Ms. McDonald? Okay, let's close the public portion.
Move to close the public portion. Second?
Okay. Kim?
Yes.
Beren?
Yes.
And Barney, yes. Mr. McDonald, I haven't forgotten you.
Thank you. I just wanted to respond to a couple items as well as just add a few more items into the record here. Just in response to that letter, I think it's been clarified during this hearing that this is, this is individuals with intellectual disabilities. My client operates these homes. It is, the testimony has indicated, I believe there's 15 of these homes throughout the Commonwealth. They have a great track record. They are licensed by the Commonwealth DDS. In order to open these facilities, they will be fully staffed, with staff there all the time. I would like to remind everybody that under the Massachusetts State Building Code, this is and must be classified as a single-family residence under the building code. While we are here tonight requesting that special permit under the institutional use, we do note that we don't completely fit within the institutional use category and the fact that the institutional use definition references people suffering from physical limitations. In the instance of the five individuals that will live here, they don't necessarily have physical limitations, although they do have intellectual disabilities. You know, to the extent that a special permit is needed, we do want to highlight the following standards that we feel like we need, the requirements to get a special permit. Specifically, this use will allow these individuals with intellectual ability, disabilities, the ability to live in a single-family residential setting. As noted in the testimony, they're intended that they will live there for their life or until they need additional services, they cannot be provided at this home. And this will fulfill a critical need for the Commonwealth as well as the town to provide housing for these individuals. The property is going to be privately owned and operated. It is already owned by the Guild for Human Services, having acquired it in April of this year. It'll be operated as a single-family residence with these five individuals. As I noted, they're an experienced operator of these homes, having opened 15 of them in the Commonwealth. We do not see any traffic or safety issues for the five residents, as they will not be driving motor vehicles, and they will be transported via van to activities such as the off-site day program. As noted, tonight, their home already exists on the property. There are no modifications to the exterior of the home planned, so we do not see any impact on the natural environment, and the home is adequately served by utilities, although we do note, as the building commissioner indicated, that we need to file some paperwork to increase the bedroom count. And the purpose, at the end of the day, the purpose is for these residents to fully participate in the Foxborough community. We feel like our residents will be attending things in Foxborough and the neighborhood as a whole, and we think that that's going to bring a positive to the neighborhood. And also just wanted to remind the board, as I know you're well aware, based on the fact that you issued a similar decision back in September, slightly different use, but the Federal Fair Housing Act applies in this instance, which prohibits discrimination in housing on the basis of disability. Between that and the State 40A Section 3, just want to remind the board that you are not permitted under the Federal Fair Housing Act or the Massachusetts State Zoning Act to impose any conditions or requirements on this home that you would not impose on a single-family residence with the same number of unrelated individuals. Happy to answer any other questions you may have, anybody on our team, and happy to discuss anything you would like.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
No.
Okay. As I indicated before, and as Mr. McDonald just indicated, we did have a similar matter that we dealt with several months ago. And that we approved with a variety of conditions. And I want to reiterate, if my colleagues will indulge me, because I've heard this before, you know, what I did state at that time, and this will basically flesh out some of what Mr. McDonald just stated. So Mr. McDonald did mention the Federal Fair Housing Act, and the Federal Fair Housing Act prohibits housing practices that discriminate on the basis of race, color, sex, national origin, family status or disability. The United States Departments of Justice and Housing and Urban Development have construed this by means of a joint statement that they issued in 2016 to apply to zoning and land use policies and practices that treat groups of persons with disabilities less favorably than groups of non-disabled persons. So accordingly, we as a zoning board are prohibited, among other things, from the following: imposing by means of zoning laws and their application restrictions or additional conditions on group housing for individuals with disabilities that are not imposed on families or other groups of unrelated individuals; applying zoning or land use laws respecting housing based on the fears, prejudices, or stereotypes of the protected characteristics of the group home's prospective or possible future residents; or excluding or limiting group homes to individuals with specific types of disabilities, and thereby discriminating against individuals with other types of disabilities. In addition, the Massachusetts Zoning Act states in part that the, quote, "imposition of land use requirements on congregate living arrangements among non-related persons with disabilities that are not imposed on families and groups of similar size or other unrelated persons shall constitute discrimination," end quote. So in sum, we can't treat a congregate living arrangement that will be the residence of five disabled individuals any differently than we would a home that would be the residence of five unrelated individuals. So we can't treat this particular home any differently as the home for five individuals who have intellectual disabilities and/or are autistic any differently than if the four or five of us were to be residing together. And again, we can't distinguish between or classify individuals with, you know, different disabilities. So we are required by the Federal Fair Housing Act to treat this particular program no differently than we would any other single-family program. Comments?
No. No comments.
Eric?
No.
Kurt, any comments?
Nothing right now.
So going to the specifics of what a special permit requires, the subject property will, as it has for many years in the past, serve as a location of a single-family dwelling. It will not present any undue traffic or safety issues, as the individuals who will be residing here themselves will not be driving motor vehicles. The future use of the property for residential purposes is not going to have any impact on the natural environment inasmuch as the properties within a zoning district that authorizes single-family dwellings by right. In past years, has been used in that particular manner and is going to be used in that manner in the, in the future. Because the subject property is adequately served by utilities and public services, the dwelling will not impose any need for additional requirements of that nature. And again, because this is going to be a home and utilized as a single-family dwelling for individuals, it's not going to have any negative effect on the character or social structure, the neighborhood in which the property is situated. So in that regard, I believe we comply, or this application complies with all of the requirements for a special permit that we're to consider.
Of course it does, because it's not your neighborhood.
Please?
Thanks, Barney. If it was your neighbor, you'd have an issue with it, and we all know you would. You're an embarrassment.
Kim, any questions?
Absolute embarrassment.
No questions.
I hate to speak with yourself. You're an embarrassment.
Thank you. Any comments?
No.
No.
Kurt, anything?
Nothing, Barney, no.
I do have several conditions that I would impose. And again, I think they would be comparable to what we would be imposing if five individuals were, five unrelated individuals who were not disabled in any manner or to be living together in a single-family home. or five unrelated individuals who were not disabled in any manner or to be living together in a single-family home. One is that there be no external reconstruction, extension or alteration of the dwelling unless it is authorized by us in writing. Two, the dwelling should not, at any time during the period in which the special permit is in force and effect, contain more than five bedrooms and shall not at any time during that period serve as the residence of more than five individuals. No additional room or area within the dwelling, other than the areas that are identified in this decision to be used as bedrooms, may be converted, whether in whole or in part, to a bedroom or may be used, whether in whole or in part, as a bedroom. Four, the applicant is to obtain all building permits and certifications from the Foxborough Building Commissioner with respect to the proposed, any renovation of the dwelling as may be directed and required thereby. And number four, the permit that we are granting under zoning bylaw table 3-1, use group F1, is specific to the Guild. It may not be assigned, conveyed or transferred thereby to any individual or entity other than an entity of which the Guild is the majority owner and of which it has operational control. I would have added, as we did in the other matter, the requirement relative to a dumpster, but I'm going to suggest that we not include that. I would ask if you speak with Mr. Brennan, the Health Director, about that. But I recognize that that would detract from the residential setting of the property, so I don't think that would be appropriate. Any other conditions?
I'm not sure we can, but can we talk about how many cars or no cars can be parked on the street in front of the house? I mean, that is not something that we would do if.
Yeah, I don't think so.
In another situation, so I don't think we're allowed to do that. If we look at the regulations, I don't think that's allowed.
No.
So since I don't believe it's allowed, if the request could be passed on to the house manager to really try to have all the vehicles in the driveway. Obviously, with a shift change, you know, we understand that, but otherwise, I would very much appreciate it. Will do.
Anything else?
No, for me.
Motion?
I move to approve with the conditions as read.
Second.
Okay, Lorraine?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
And Barney, yes. Sometime in the next couple of weeks, we'll draft a decision. It has to be filed in the registry of deeds in Dedham. There is an appeal period, as I mentioned earlier, of 20 days after the matter is, after our decision is filed with the town clerk. So after it has been filed with town clerk and after that appeal period runs, then you should file it at the registry of deeds. Obviously, if you have any questions, ask Diana or Mr. Shippey. And obviously, you're going to deal with Mr. Shippey as far as those outstanding issues. So, you know, I recognize that this is not a decision that the neighborhood perhaps looks at fondly, but I would hope that through the efforts of all concerned that you will welcome the individuals who will live here and that they will become, you know, good neighbors to you as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anything else?
No. I passed out the one new application for next month. The deadline is the 27th, so. Thoroughly, something else could show up, but I don't know of anything else.
Okay, so thus far, it's just.
One thing.
Just one thing. Okay.
And the continued, the voucher.
Whatever we continue.
Right, 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 yes.
I'm not going to be here in February, so hopefully we won't get anything from Kim's sake, but I'll work with you. We do get something, you know, in advance. You know, all of us got the invitation for the, you know, relative to the Housing Authority facility. Diana and I were there and we were thanked, you know, for our work in approving that particular application. My understanding, and Scott, you may know otherwise, is that they're hoping to break ground in March, beginning of March?
Hoping. They're hoping. Their permits have been approved.
Okay.
They're just waiting to be paid for, so. And I think that's just funding to the state, so.
Yeah. Well, they got some of that funding, so.
Yeah, exactly. I heard they got a big check.
So.
But other than that, yes, we're, it was either February or March that we're going to try to break ground.
So hopefully we'll be invited for that. Maybe we'll plant trees. Anybody else have anything else?
Happy holidays.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, happy holidays.
Eric? Yes or no?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Lorraine?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
And Barney, yes. Happy holidays, everybody. Happy New Year.
Happy holidays, everyone. Thanks for all the great work.